This is to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic of which we serve, one nation, united. We give this one to the President.
Thank you everyone. So for our February 22 team doors, are we do have a few miscellaneous items on there? The mechanically, we had to do some, some code adjustments in a few of the schools for some condensate lines. As you can see on there, we wrapped up a couple things for the second floor admin, some added lines and some insulation for ceiling. And then we have a, we have a small credit on the bottom there from security designs, which was in bit pack three for their allowance. And then, as you can see, we do have a significant cost for, that's actually pertaining to bid pack four Cheyenne fire alarm. The system that was quoted was a system that we don't use in the district. Both the contractors or the lowest bidders did the same system, which was national time. After speaking with operations, the, the system we use throughout the district is an EST I work system. So there was an increase in cost for that. And obviously, we'd like to keep everything unison through all this system for, throughout the district for service purposes and so on, so.
So if I could just for clarification, on the, on that fire alarm, had the bid specifications been written with EST, I think you said?
Yes.
Then the, the cost for that fire alarm would have been whatever was on the original bids that people put. Plus, they would have had to put something like this amount.
That is correct.
So, so as much as this is an increase, it really is what it should be.
Correct. Absolutely.
Makes sense. Yeah, just clarification that ever EST, there were five manufacturers did. As an option for this security system or fire, fire alarm system. They just both bidders that did on it, did the lowest possible.
Right.
That's what happened.
And we, we kind of thought, we thought that maybe it was a strategic option for national time to try to get into the district.
So. What was the total cost on that?
I believe the total cost was 170 plus the 31 Bible.
Is that including 31 there?
Um, no, that, that was, that correct. Yep. The 31 is an add to that.
So in the future, you, you won't list five except to the fire alarms manufactured, you just list this one?
Correct.
That was a oversight, I remember. It should have had five. You have questions? That are in the chief over some group.
That's good.
Well, it's be the, if this building is like me never. We'll call the meeting to close at 6:11. Yeah. We'll do that for the next warm, for the morning service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bettner. This evening, we're going to recognize members of our transportation department for some of the activities that they've been involved in over the past few months. I think we all realize that in our area, there have been some situations that have been very difficult, especially for those communities where they occurred, occurred. And one of those was, was with Oxford Community Schools. But whenever things happen, there's always, what, what tends to come to the surface is, is glimmers of hope regarding the human spirit and what people do for each other. And for those, for that reason, we're recognizing our bus drivers this evening who certainly provided a beacon of light to the Oxford community and to anyone who pays attention to what, what our drivers and other drivers and other districts and other people have done to support the Oxford community. So what I would like to do first is, I'm going to read over our, our bus drivers that I think are here, and there are quite a few, so maybe hopefully this is right. And if you could just, just, all you need to do at this point is put a hand in here so we can, we can see you being here. We have Carol Lee Rubrich, there's Carol Lee, Mary Jo Moni, Barb Sernai, Jamie Martin, Michelle Brazer, Shell, Alton Wusajani, Bill Watts, is Bill here? Okay. Chris Bobrowski, that's Chris, Terry Jackson, Terry in the back, Nancy Lebel, Nancy, Connie Coell, or Cowell, sorry, Cowell. Okay, Mike Locke, Mike, there's Mike, Annette Johnson, okay, Heidi Shagana, there's Heidi in the back, Jennifer Gardner. And we have our director, Malon, Malon Williams, Malon, and Patty Broll, where's Patty? And then we also, those were the people who should be here tonight, indicated to be here, who were very supportive of the Oxford, what occurred there. And then also, the, our drivers, prior to the holidays, on their own volition, organizing, organized stuff of us with help of our community relations department, which takes place at Walmart up here in the corner. And then, I've said some people already, I won't say their name. Well, Michelle Brazer is here and she's involved in that. Cookie Gray is Cookie here, Cookie. Barb Sernai is here again working on that, where's Barb over there? And Terry Jackson, okay, and Linda Stone. Did I miss anyone? Because we got this and maybe decided to come after this. Will it be okay? I don't want to miss anyone. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna start with a video clip from Channel 2 News, Fox News. I don't know if Channel 2 still really applies anymore, it just dates me. But Fox News, local Fox News, and this was featured one evening on their broadcast, so.
School buses were still running long after the last student was dropped off on Wednesday. Bus drivers gathered in Macomb County gearing up for a journey to Oxford.
It's nice that everybody can still get together and be on a united front in a tragedy.
They may have been close to an hour away, but like so many They may have been close to an hour away, but like so many others in Metro Detroit and beyond, they feel a kinship with the Oxford School District.
Our bus drivers, we are the ones that want to go out there and be there with them.
And so, off they went, picking up more buses along the way.
Chippewa Valley Schools, Centerline, South Lake, Roseville, New Haven, Richmond, Utica, Lance Cruz, Romeo, Anchor Bay, Warren, Elmont, and Armada.
Ultimately, pulling into a parking lot at Oxford High, past a memorial for the victims of a deadly shooting just one week ago. This idea came about from one school bus driver in Macomb County who wanted to do something to show their support. Word spread of what she wanted to do, it turned into this. Fourteen school buses now parked outside Oxford High School to show that they too stand with them.
We care. We all care. And that's why all these, you know, districts are coming together as one to be there with them.
Once there, they added their own names and messages to the ever-growing memorial, lit candles, and huddled together.
We just want these families to know how much they're loved. And that's why we're here today.
All in honor of the four students who lost their lives.
I know we're all going to be saying lots of prayers for them, for each one. Madison, Hannah, Tate, and Justin. We love you unconditionally.
Privately, a member of the Oxford community offered his gratitude for these school bus drivers' selfless gesture, letting them know this effort was seen and appreciated. In Oxford, Dave Spencer. Fox 2 News.
Okay. I'm Malon. Do you'd like to go to the mic and?
Good evening, everyone. I want to first say to the school district and to the board, thank you for giving us this recognition as transportation department. This, when they mentioned on the news broadcast that it was one driver whose vision who set that up, and that was Chris Bobrowski. My idea was she came up to Patty, actually. And for, I would like to recognize Patty Broll, sending out to all the other districts in an email, and the other districts wanted to join in and came along. And you should have seen it was over a mile and something long in the convoy, picking up some other districts. So I would like to thank Patty Broll.
You want to talk a little bit about your inspiration and? Chris? Sure she does.
We used to hop and without a mic.
Do you have two double A's?
Yeah.
Two.
Chris, to maybe fill this time. We can all become impatient and start poking each other. Saying, saying things to each other, and then you can show us how that's handled. Yeah. I think we're good.
Sit down. Well, it started with, after the incident, we saw it on the news, just watching those parents showing up at the school, grabbing hold of their children. I just couldn't imagine as a parent feeling what they were feeling that day. And every day since then, watching my kids get on and off the bus, especially high school. And they get off, and they go in the building and say, God forbid, you know, this could happen here, you know? And I just wanted to do something for Oxford, you know, to show our support to the Oxford drivers, because what they went through, you know, they dropped out of kids that morning, and some of them didn't get to go home. So that's why I felt like if we showed our support and we knew, you know, let them know that we were there thinking of them, can't take their pain away, but the more support they can have and comfort, try to heal. That's why I did it, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chris. So in the end, Chris, how many buses, how many districts was it again? I think it was seven, now I forget. Fourteen, fourteen, fourteen districts, fourteen school buses, fourteen districts. That's very good. Okay, and then Malon, was someone to talk about stuff of us too, or?
Yes, so we're gonna have Michelle Brazier talk about stuff of us. But one thing aside note there, the Oxford Transportation Department sent us a thank you card with all their signatures on it and a picture of them with a plus. And I believe us in front of our buses that really appreciate that we have hanging up in transportation.
So, very good. Michelle.
Thank you, Chris, for lowering the mic. So, okay, so I'm Michelle Brazier, and this program started about six years ago with a bus driver named Jan Reed, who founded the Stuff of Us program. She is now retired, but we continue on the program. And we take on a lot of volunteers, you know, every year to help this program run. Not one person could ever do this. It has just flourished with Walmart, people, the customers, they, they come and they donate food, they donate clothing, and they donate cash and gift cards. And all of these are great resources for people in our community. They're aimed to go towards students and families within Chippewa Valley Schools in need. During the year, you know, crisis happens in families, maybe they're burned out of their homes, they have nowhere to go, they're in a hotel, they need basic necessities, they need food. We have the food pantry stocked up as best we can. We have clothing, they can, it's nice to know that these families can come to their own school and get the support that they need to get them by for a certain length of time. So it's a really humbling feeling to be able to help these people, you know, in our own community. And I believe this year, we helped over ninety students and families in need, and that's huge. That's huge. And it's really heartwarming to know that they can reach out to us and get the support that they need. And we know that they really appreciate it. And it's not just, we do it, you know, near Christmas time, it's, you know, around Thanksgiving, but it's just, it's not just at Christmas time when people are in need. Yes, we have all the toys, we fill up this room with toys and, and basic necessities for people, but it's just not at Christmas time. This could be throughout the entire year, you know? So we're really, really happy that we can do this for our community. And we're, you know, very proud to be a part of Chippewa Valley Schools and can put this program on. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I think it's a little bit of a difficult picture to see, but, oh, I just went ahead right back there. That's this, this boardroom set up, and families come here during the afternoon and come in and kind of shop, so to speak, with, for their children for Christmas. I know that, if you think about a bus driver's job, I always say it's one of the most difficult in the district because their job is to look out there and make sure that they are safely transporting kids to school. And behind them are, it could be anywhere up to seventy students sitting behind them. And that's a lot, if you think about that. I mean, kids, kids are kids, and there's a lot of activity, and our drivers do it. I'm, I'm just so impressed with their, with their dedication to their job and dedication to the purpose of their job. And, and then to think, after driving for much of the day, at the end of the day, they organize this bus outing to Oxford to, to honor or to recognize those people who just dealt with a tragedy. And then also take the time on weekends to, to go up to Walmart and be there with a bus while people drop off donations. So I know in talking to some of the drivers about this, their passion for it is obvious, and what they want to do for other people. So thank you to all of our bus drivers, and I'm going to turn over to the board here if the board has comments, and then I just want to end it with something, so.
I would just like to say thank you very much. And also, the bus drivers in our community, you know, they work hard and they deal with different situations every day. But the other thing I noticed is that the bus drivers always decorate their bus for their whole community parade every year. And they really feel like, it really seems like we have a, our bus, our transportation department is really community focused. And that's why it's so important to have people that work in our district that care about our community. So we really, I mean, I would just like to say thank you so much for everything you do and for doing that, those extra things that show your caring about kids and about community members. So thank you so much for being here.
Just, you know, echo whatever the thing about Mr. Roberts, as Queen O said, like, having kids that rode the bus. I can appreciate what you guys do. Thank you for your dedication. I'd like to say, oh, thank you guys. I know the driving the bus, it's more than just driving the bus, you have a relationship with those children. Share most kids in New Yorks. And I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all. I know that you're all very much overworked right now and have been this entire year, and the fact that you take a moment to think about somebody else is amazing. And it was, it made me proud as a Chippewa Valley person that you guys took the lead on, you know, trying to help out Oxford in any way you could. That meant a lot to me. And thank you for what you do every day, because I know it is not easy.
Yes. Yeah, I just, I would just like to say thank you too. I go by buses all the time because I drive a lot, and it's really tough. Some of the roads are very difficult to get through, and you got a tough job, and especially in the winter, when our roads aren't plowed properly. It's very difficult to get around, get the kids in safely and get to school, get back home. So thank you for everything you've done. Of course, the Oxford thing is terrific, they've stepped up. Thank you so much for what you did.
Yes, just representing our community is much appreciated. Take your own time, represent our community, be at our school buses, show that how we do our employees here, but really an extension of our friendship of our community heading out to Oxford with that bus. So that was awesome. Much appreciated by, I like the district, but our community also, it's great that you got a piece on the news for everybody to see that also. Yeah, thank you for your time and for your dedication to our children. We can get to school and from school safely amongst a number of aggressive drivers. These big old school buses coming around, all these people. So thank you very much.
So this is a, I just thought of something when you said that, Frank. And this can be just by a sign, give us a sign, you can either put your head up and down like that, or like this, you get two choices here. Are, because I kind of noticed this myself, and I don't know if it's just me, are people a little crazy or as drivers right now? Pretty unanimous? Yeah, okay, yeah. So, all right, so we always like to, to make sure that you leave with a parting gift. So we do have parting gifts for you. Just a little token of our appreciation. And Kim is going to, Kim is gonna meet you in the hall, and you can take one when you leave. But we have, from one of our partners who helps us with our, who has in the past helped us with our foundation Taste Fest, we have, we have bund cakes because we have nothing but respect. I didn't really, listen, I can't take credit for that. I think they kind of said as their tagline at the flexo. But you know, I thought the other thing interesting on this was, and this was not by design, I believe that the sunflower is the national flower of Ukraine. So I think it's a perfect thing that they put on this for you. So once again, thank you for your sense of spirit. Because that's what makes the difference in anyone's job performance. It's your sense of spirit in serving others. So thank you for being here tonight. If anyone is watching from home and they're looking for a part-time job, we need bus drivers, but we need good bus drivers, not just a bus driver. And they too, one day, can earn a bund cake. So with that, if you want to stay for the meeting, you can stay for the meeting, but if, oh, we're gonna do a picture. Perfect, Diane's always thinking of that, Mark. So we'll gather our bus drivers right up here. Come on up here, please. And just kind of gather around here. This side face this way.
I like your shirt.
All right, once again.
Thank you for the day.
Oh, he is?
Oh, I don't know.
Thank you so much.
Whereas Ted Zotos, Lynn Mayer, Jerry Avansky, Shirley Allen, and Steve Elia. Have served the Chippewa Valley School District faithfully and diligently. For a period of 24 years as an assistant principal and principal, 26 years as a teacher and principal. 32 years as an assistant principal and principal, seven years as a human resource supervisor. And 17 years as a bus driver and custodian respectively. Whereas Ted Zotos, Lynn Mayer, Jerry Avansky, Shirley Allen, and Steve Elia. Through their leadership have had a positive impact on the staff, students, and the community. Whereas Ted Zotos, Lynn Mayer, Jerry Avansky, Shirley Allen, and Steve Elia. Contentious, loyal, hardworking employees have elected to retire. And whereas Ted Zotos, Lynn Mayer, Jerry Avansky, Shirley Allen, and Steve Elia will be missed by all their school colleagues. Now therefore, may it resolve that the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District. Not only on their behalf, but also that of the Superintendent of Schools and the Administration. Extend their thanks and appreciation for a job well done, as well as best wishes for the future. Yet further result that this resolution, having been adopted by the Board of Education. Of the Chippewa Valley School District on the 7th day of March 2022. Be made a permanent part of the records of the school district. And a copy sent to Ted Zotos, Lynn Mayer, Jerry Avansky, Shirley Allen, and Steve Elia as an expression of our appreciation. Certainly will miss all of them, because a good call will be in our district for some.
Are the principals never going to be, or they come to be recognized?
That's not finalized yet. We're working in that.
Very good. That's the whole business area, there's about this evening. By the way, new business. Prove change order summary report, January 2022, Mr. Sutter.
The recommended motions of the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education. Approve the 2018 on issue change order summary report for the month of January 2022.
I'm moved. Mr. Quinn, support, we're on script, Rashad, please.
This work consists of changes to existing contracts for the purpose of only request to work. Deducts, co compliance, or hidden conditions of the construction and equipment projects. All amounts are within their contingency, budget allocation, issued forward, which is due to the subcommittee. Monday, February 7, 2022, and 2018, on the second.
Questions, comments, by the board. Was reviewed, submitted. Okay, all those in favors, if I say aye.
Aye.
Posed? By the way, two. Have to approve 2021, 2022 Cooperation Act for General Cooperative Activities Funds.
The recommended motions of the Chippewa Valley School. That the following resolution be adopted by the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education. To approve the general fund and new student intervention program under the Cooperative Activities Fund budgets. For the 2021, 2022, this figure, further request that the reading of the resolution be wait.
Motion. So, Bob, it's clear. So rationale?
It's a long one. The administration has updated the budgets for the general fund and cooperative activities fund. Which includes both the International Academy of the Home Program and the new student intervention program. Changes having the greatest impact of the general fund are further detailed in the following chapters. Projected revenues for general fund increased just under 1.4 million. From 179.1 million to 180.25 million. The increase in revenue is a net result of the following updates. Recognizing supplemental elementary and secondary school emergency relief, also known as the S R two formula grant funds. That's four, an increase of 4.7 million. Recognizing the American Rescue Plan, A R P. Elementary and secondary schools, Emergency Relief Fund, which is the S R three formula grant funds. That's an increase of 10.5 million dollars. The redistribution of local revenue sources to the Cooperative Activities Fund. For the Student Intervention Program, that's a decrease of 14.2 million. C T E Equipment Grant Fund, which is just under 80,000. Increase O R S Employer Contribution Forfeiture Campaign Revenue, which is an increase of just under 60,000. Review and adjustments of other revenue sources as necessary. That's expenditures for the general fund increased just over 1.2 million. From 178.6 million to 179.8 million. Significant changes for the first, from the first amended budget mainly result from recognizing the supplemental. Elementary and secondary school emergency relief or S R two formula grant expenditures. An increase of 828,000, that was in the classroom cameras. C T E Equipment Grant Fund expenditures increased 79, 7, 79,300 dollars, and then the review and adjustment of other expenditure. The changes identified projected revenues greater than expenditures by 722,344 dollars in the second amendment. The first amended budget estimated revenues exceeding expenditures by 531,440 dollars. The budgeted, the budget modifications resulted in projected. June 30, 2022, any fund balance of 33.1 million dollars, or 18, 18.4 percent of the budgeted expenditures. Cooperative Activities Fund will now incorporate all the International Academy of the Home Program. And the new Student Intervention Program. This budget adoption is intended to align resources in support of long-term transformative impacts. For students through evidence-based education. Just for clarification purposes, there's another round of federal funds called the 11 T funds. Which have not been allocated by the state that that I believe the funding window. They're saying is going to put up sometime next week, that will be an additional six point, roughly 6.4 million dollars. That we will most likely be addressing in the May budget. Sorry for the long question.
This is the one question for me. Maybe you explained it somewhere, but in the 2122 first amended budget of local revenue. It's 27,460,000. It's now, in the second amendment, it's 10,668.
Correct.
But the end number is still about the same, total revenue, so why did local drop?
So local, local is being recognized under the Cooperative Education Fund, so if you look at the. The budget for the Cooperative Ed Fund, that's being recognized as local revenue there. And then what's offsetting that are the increase in federal funds, yes, or funds, offset that change. So what's happening is the local funds are now being recognized under the Cooperative Ed Fund.
But, so, but the federal fund increased.
Correct. So the local went down, and the general fund, the federal went up. The local got moved from the general fund to the Cooperative Ed Fund.
Thank you.
The questions, cats, for. Somebody's members were pulling in at one time funding, this is so, this is. Pulling into our general fund, back to our general fund. And film fund equity to something else, because expenditures went up by several million from the first official budget, so this second amendment. Expenses gone up several million, fund equity used on up to the same times.
But again, you said, and they all read that, that it's one exact one. Fortunately, there's, unless you spend it on one type expenditures, there's, it's nothing that can continue with expenditures on a sustainable basis.
So a lot of these things that we we put on the fund equity next year will have to be funded, we'll back out. And then, I saw a number of things that. The district is working, and one of those, yes, is our fund, it was not worked back this week. Scott from, you. I remember the term used was, but it was some sort of center for developing the assistance of plant brand. You speak to that for a second.
That is exactly what we did with this budget amendment, so the setup of the, under the Cooperative Education Fund, the student, student intervention program. That setup is done through the coordination of M D, our auditors, and our attorneys. To basically make sure that that fund is recognized and and done properly for accounting purposes. So that all the revenues that expenses, expenses that occur in that fund are properly recognized and recorded the way they're intended.
Okay, so it's more of an accounting issue. Any other questions? Time is about work. You're done, all those in favors, if I say aye. Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have to just take through the bylaws of public participation at board meetings. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to five minutes duration. Participant shall correct all comments to the board, not to staff or other participants. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, no person may press for questioning or comment. Complaints against the confiable school personnel are not the express of an open meeting. Social complaints should be first submitted and run into the board and aired in open or closed session according to the rules of persons involved. Presiding officer may or won't agree to make a statement, and the statement is to be personally directed, is to be obscene or overruled. Request any individual to leave the meeting when the person does not preserve reasonable network. Request assistance from law enforcement officers and removal of a disloyal person, and that person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting. A call for recess or adjournment to a time, with the lack of public network, and so interferes with the orderly conduct of leading is warranted such action. Play these rules with the approval of the board, when necessary, for the factual privacy for the administration of the board's business. Right, this evening. So first up, we have Mr. Shipley. Stan, Danny Ship, Shipley?
Shipley, yeah, right, first time.
Welcome, and please, just for.
Hello, so I see you're still reading the same thing from the bylaws that you read last time, that I'm pretty sure is a violation of the Constitution. I'm gonna hold off challenging you on that again, because I got something else I'd rather talk about than than risk you having me show them. Or asking me show them, ask for reality, even though I hope they wouldn't. Um, so. My kids, I discovered, rediscovered recently, are using their school laptops for hours and hours a day in class. To do things that aren't school things, and I'm certain that my kids are not unique in this. My daughter was spending five and a half to six hours of class time every single day on a website called Scratch. Not the worst site in the world, but she was dividing her attention between. Role playing, playing the games, and arguing with strangers, and her teacher in every single class but band, because she doesn't have a computer out in band. And I was outraged when I saw her web history, honestly, it was five and a half to six hours a day on this app, so every single class she was in. She was giving her teacher half of her attention. This has caused me to look up the benefits of computers in schools in front of students, and there are none. When you put, the more time, it's a really solid correlation, the more time a child is on a computer in school. The worst standardized test scores are in reading, English, and math. It is just, there's no benefit, it's been studied, it's been studied for a decade. Right, so we pushed into this thing because of the pandemic, I get that. But now we've made a multimillion dollar commitment or investment, and maybe you feel like, you know, we don't want to just abandon a multimillion dollar investment. And I I think, I would like you guys to reconsider that, because my daughter isn't alone. My son, to give you another example, um, there was a day Roblox server went down. We don't let them use the computer in the morning at home, but he's an early riser, used his school issued laptop and discovered this in the morning. And then at the end of every class period, he was on forums reading about the shutdown. He spent some part of every single class that day obsessing over a down server for one of his video games. What should have happened is he should have discovered it in the morning or not, because we wouldn't have given him that privilege that he used on his school computer. And he would have, I don't know, thought about it for 30 minutes and dropped it. Instead, he was spending a good portion of every class hour and probably every mental minute of his day obsessing. Over the fact that his video game server was down, that should never have been possible. Right, he should have come to class first hour, maybe interacted with another human being face to face, hey, Steve, did you see the Roblox servers down? And then had actual human interaction. My kids aren't like inherently social, and the school laptop thing is making it so they don't spread their social wings at all. They spend all of the time that I did when I was growing up, communicating with my classmates and building lifelong friendships, they spend it all looking at a screen. And and I would like you guys to to reconsider this direction, I understand that that it wasn't an intentional decision, I bet if I went around and asked each one of you. You would say, you know what, five to seven hours a day in front of the screen is not a good idea. Uh, you know, you've pushed teachers into these tech platforms because of the pandemic, it was necessary, I get that. But I would love to see us pull out of them, the 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 solution you had before with the carts with laptops. Now we have more laptops, let's have more carts, instead of putting laptops in every student's hand, telling them to go around to every class with a laptop. Let's put them back on the cart, let teachers have them when they need them. But if you're going to put a computer in front of a student every day, they're not going to be paying attention. And and I don't think this is a problem for the tech department to dive into, the tech department has been great.
Sorry, one minute, I'm sorry.
That's fine, the tech department has been great, when I found out just how much this was happening, I spoke to vice principal. He was great, he directed me to someone in the tech department, she was wonderful, she put a block on that site for my daughter. But then my daughter spent the next day, found a new site to spend five hours on, right, so that that's just. If you're going to put a laptop in front of a kid, a teacher can't police this reasonably, they can't be seeing every student's screen, making sure they're not going back and forth. Between two different programs, two two different windows. This thing we're doing, we we committed ourselves about understanding what we're doing. And I'm just asking for some serious reconsideration of this direction, because it's not helpful. And it is harmful, and so the American Academy of Pediatric Rex Men's, one to two hours a day. For older children in front of a screen, we, that's what we do, we let our kids during the week have an hour when they get home, unless, you know, mom and I go out somewhere, then they get some more time. But now they go to school to get five to six hours, and then they're going to come home, and then I'm going to give them another hour? I can't do that. So now I'm the only adult in their life saying, no, you can't have that screen time, which makes me the bad guy, which I know isn't your intent, but it's something I'm very happy with. So thank you for considering my words.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley, for your panelists. Okay, um, next up, Mrs. Perrin, oh, yeah, Perrin. Oh, who is Perrin? Thanks for coming, please share your panelist report.
I am here to present to you the information I gathered regarding the CRT you in both the Michigan curriculum and the Chippewa Valley curriculum. I'm sure we are all in agreement that racism is wrong, but CRT teaches racism. Let's examine the nationwide response and implementation of CRT both in education and the workplace. Do you believe these equity exercises that have occurred in schools should be occurring in schools you oversee? These are just a few. First graders were asked to deconstruct their racial and sexual identities and rank themselves according to power privilege. Teachers during a P D were forced to locate themselves on an oppressive matrix. Fifth grade class was forced to celebrate black communism, simulate a black power rally to free Angela Davis from prison on a murder charge. White teachers were told that they are guilty of spirit murder against black children and must empty their privilege so they can allege their stolen inheritance. These are just a few examples of how CRT is implemented in schools because teachers and staff all come from different backgrounds and beliefs. They incorporate ideologies in their teaching unless you have instructed them not to do so. Our departments and government this past year have implemented CRT training of staff who told virtually all white people contribute to racism and all must convert to ideology of anti-racism, that whites are privileged and need to apologize to women and people of color. Another department told white employees they were socialized into oppressor roles. Because you are born white, you are an oppressor. According to CRT, each one of you is an oppressor. Large areas of the government and universities are teaching these concepts. Some of our teachers are doing the same in our schools. Our previous board meetings, you stated C B, Chippewa Valley follows the Michigan core curriculum and does not teach CRT. Let's turn our attention to Michigan standards of the Chippewa Valley district curriculum. Have you read the curriculum in Michigan, Michigan curriculum? Have you read Chippewa Valley's curriculum? I have. I'm here to tell you that many standards in the curriculum provide an open door for teachers to teach and promote CRT concept. I learned that you hire a full-time diversity, equity, school culture consultant who can focus solely on the district when it comes to cultural proficiency. What does that mean? During the panel discussion in September 2020, the same consultant explained how to connect Black Lives Matter to Michigan social studies curriculum standards and remarked that if teachers have, quote, have a problem teaching things that are aligned with the standards based on who we're educating about, then we gotta talk about a different kind of problem and whether you belong in the position that you're in. What does that mean? Michigan curriculum, social studies standard eight point three provides civil rights examples for teachers to use. Interesting, all examples are black issues at the complete exclusion of all other minority groups. Just as recent as two weeks ago, one of your English teachers at the high school had students writing about Malcolm X in a comparative paper. Before giving the assignment, this teacher wrote on the board B L M and A L M and asked the students what these symbolize. The teacher then said in paraphrase, you can't tell them what to think or feel as mostly white people in the class, and if you're trying to convey a positive message about B L M and say all lives matter, it doesn't work because they already think you're bad about you. This was English classes, not social studies or history. This demonstrates how CRT concepts can be presented at a whim across subject matters. Sound familiar from what I have previously warned you? Chippewa Valley has begun a slippery slope and you didn't even know it. Because it is unclear that teachers have not been given directions by a staff meetings, emails, memos to not teach CRT, and the example of this English teacher clearly tells you that these concepts are being taught in your school. Teachers should not be divisive, but rather build and encourage relationships among students. Provided here is a list I've given you of the classes that, when I looked at my, were opportunities for your teachers and staff to introduce and present implementing CRT concepts based on what I observed in the goals and the strands that were attached to them. In conclusion, I'm requesting a call this week, not from Miss Blaine, but from an administrator who will investigate and answer these questions. I am also requesting the policy, letters, emails, communications. You gave teachers and staff not to teach CRT that verifies that it's not happening here. It would be helpful if these answers were provided at the next board meeting. I don't think anyone is opposed to conversations about race and racism, the civil rights movement and history of inequalities. But when these conversations and lessons require diminishing of another group of people, this perpetuates and further promotes racism. We are all familiar with Martin Luther King, I Have a Dream speech, which focuses on character in racial issues.
I'm sorry, one, one minute.
CRT and supporting movement, Black Lives Matter does not seek to join, but it's determined to further judge, divide, exclude another group entirely by a race. Where is the focus on character? Where's the demand for curriculum and lesson plans that emphasize treating each other with dignity and respect? Let's have these difficult conversations that address failures in inequality and to help current and future generations improve humanity. But the issue is how this is done, CRT. In my 40 years of teaching and experience in raising, raising five children in a multiracial family, the most productive way to encourage character and increase awareness is with instruction, honest conversation, and promote understanding, kindness, and respect. My final question to you as a board, to all of you is, what are the curriculum and diversity equity in school culture goals of Chippewa Valley School District? To divide and further perpetuate racism? Or to unify our student body and community through curriculum and instruction that teaches valuing one another with mutual respect? We appreciate your efforts for greater transparency and look forward to some response from you tonight during the boards of and about segment. Thank you, I hope this encourages the best Chippewa Valley for everyone.
We have the fourth question for you if you want.
Sure, thank you, thank you for your panelists. Round two, H, you know, your occasions? Right, leadership, right, let's keep it to work. All right, who's first, for Mr.?
I was saying I have a few items this evening. I think Sarah's gonna cue something up here before she starts that. As you know, we were featured in the national news for what was occurring in one of our high schools, which would say occurs in all of our schools, but of teaching of acceptance of others, of creating an inclusive environment, which, which, in which all students are respected. And that transcends many areas which, which might differentiate one student from another. It's not necessarily about skin color, ethnicity. And here's an example that we'll play, Sarah will play, like the board maybe.
Michigan High School junior JP Spagnola loves to sing between classes. But in the past few weeks, his solos have become full-blown school-wide sing-alongs with hundreds joining in to support the 19-year-old with Down Syndrome. It's a gesture that's meant the world to JP's parents, Jim and Kelly.
It was very touching. First off, JP loves the National Anthem. So he loves all music, and then his friends came and joined, just decided to sing along with them. And then to hear that song as it grew and grew, it was cool to see him included.
It was, it was amazing.
The amazing moments spreading on social media. And when it came time to celebrate JP's birthday last week, students at Dakota High School in Macomb helped lift him up with songs. Classmates even surprised JP at home with gifts and well wishes. Making sure he was part of the big games, too. A few of them gathered to tell us how JP's joy inspires them every day.
We kinda like made our day because just to see him with us, having a good time, smiling. Just fun to be around.
I walked around the rest of the day with a big smile on my face after we all seen the National Anthem.
A young man's love of music. Showing others how to celebrate what we all have in common.
What would you say is, is the bigger message for all of us?
We're more alike than different. I think that's the key thing, whether it's a child with Down's Syndrome like JP, whether it's a race nationality, skin color, or a different disability, I mean, we're all people.
I think if we could learn anything from these kids, it's just kindness matters. And again, we're more alike than different.
So that segment was featured on the NBC Saturday Evening News, I think it was two weeks ago, might have been three. But I, I think what's important here is, is how this addresses the purpose of public education. What, what was played on that newscast would not be seen in many schools in our country because many schools accept only certain types of kids. Public schools educate all kids. And I think that's important, that's important because kids need to go to a school that reflects the world in which they'll live. Our world is very diverse and students need opportunities to interact with people who are different from them. Now, that was very meaningful to the parents, and they were on, on the, on the broadcast, and they would be here this evening, but they're out of town. But that's not only important to them for their son. It is important to students who are participating in that, who go to, go to school with kids who are different from them. So the students that were gathered in someone's home and spoke to what it, what it means and how it makes them feel is very, it's just as important in our society that they have that experience as the student JP has that experience. That's good for all people. So I wanna read a thank you note that was written by the parents to, to the school staff, to Dakota High School. It was written on February 12th. Uh, no, it wasn't, I'm sorry. Um, this is how they start their thank you. February 12th, 2003, 19 years ago. What seems like forever ago, seems like yesterday to Gemini. It's when we were blessed with JP being born. Scared, excited, and nervous as we set out as new parents. Just like anyone else, except we weren't like everyone else. We had become one in 866, the statistical chance of having a baby with Down Syndrome. Unlike a lot of parents, we knew JP had Down Syndrome before he was born. We had an amniocentesis. What we did not know was the extent of any health issues or cognitive issues and what the path before him would be as he grew up. JP not only had Down Syndrome, but he was born early by emergency C-section. He was very, very sick with three holes in his heart, a blockage in his intestines, and a life-threatening chemical imbalance. Within the first three weeks, first weeks of life and weeks in the hospital, he had to have an abdominal surgery. It was evident from the beginning that while little in size, he was mighty in spirit as he came through like a champ. JP recovered from the surgery. Two of the three holes in his heart closed on their own, and medically, he stabilized and came home. Despite this, we were still so scared for JP, scared of what the world around him would be like, scared of him being alone. His only time could tell JP wouldn't be alone. We even, we even found out we wouldn't be alone. Over the past 19 years, we've met so many others in our community that have family members with disabilities, facing many of the same challenges. Many, many great friendships have been formed because JP, of JP having Down Syndrome. But we still worried if he would be accepted in the outside world, and would he be accepted for who he is? This week answered these questions, allowing us to feel something we never thought we would. By seeing JP accepted for who he is by his fellow students, what we feared more than anything else when he was born, the lack of being accepted was gone. JP got his inclusion. What started as a simple gesture by a few great kids who took a few minutes out of their day to stop and sing with JP grew, and grew, and grew. Somehow this little guy singing alone, usually with an opera twist, now only has, now has a building singing along with him. Now he is more alike than different. We always said we would never change JP or take away this Down Syndrome if given the chance to. But we would change the world around him to accept him for who he is, Down Syndrome and all. Thank you, Dakota, for accepting JP and for seeing past the differences and for easing the fears of these parents for so many more who may have a child that's not typical. So that was written by Mr. and Mrs. Spagnolo. And I think that really this speaks to, to what we as a school district consider to be inclusion. And that's why having programs in our school that involve kids who are different and allowing them to interact and be with kids who are so-called not different is so important. This isn't about now, this isn't about a news segment, it's about impacting people's lives. And that's what public education can provide for people. So with that, I just wanna thank NBC News for, for putting that story out there because it's, I think it's an important one to be told, so. All right, I'm going to, to move on to a couple of the things under administrative reports. I think there's a slide here, I had a wonderful opportunity a couple of weeks ago. No offense, but I can do this one first.
Yeah, I can go.
Maybe the other ones are, maybe I got my order out of there.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start here, this is good. This is Lego Robotics, and the competition was held Friday evening at Chippewa Valley High School. And this involves all of our elementary schools, all teams, all schools have Lego robotic teams. Either teachers in the building teach, teach the students how to participate in the competition, when sometimes there are parent volunteers who also participate. So as I've said before, this is something that started with a couple of teachers many years ago at a, at a couple of schools who were interested in Legos, and it grew to involve all of our schools with a full gym with parents and all school mascots there. So that was this past Friday, and I would like to recognize Mike Malick, who teaches at Mohawk Elementary, who coordinates this and the middle school event, which will occur, I believe, a week from this coming Friday at your school. You can see some kids participating there in some of the events. If you could go back, I, the events are always very interesting. The one on the bottom, oh, I forget what it's called, but the kids programmed their Lego robot, which they build to move across that, that white mat you see, and they get points for if their robot touches one of the red squares. They get a point off if it touches a black line. And what the robot needs to do is work its way around the, the mat, and then it has a sharp device at the end of the, at the end of the Lego robot, and its, its job is to puncture the balloon and pop the balloon. They can do that at the beginning or the end, whichever way they want, and they get both points for that. So that's one. There's others like sumo, in which I don't think we have a picture of sumo, is there a sumo in this one, the next one? No sumo. Where the robots kind of go at each other and knock each other off the board. That's of high interest to the kids. And this is just now presentations and some of our, our school winners right there, so. That was past Friday. So now if we go to the next one, I think, there we go. I was in Cherokee a couple of weeks ago, and I was so excited when I got there. I was in the lunchroom, and I found out it was Hundreds Day, which is celebrated across the school, hundreds day of schools, so it's sort of become a quasi-holiday. And on the right here, you'll see some boys, what I like at Cherokee is the kids get to dress like they're a hundred. And so you see some boys there on the right. Cardigan sweater, so I might have a sweater like that, and I'm like a hundred. But I must say, of all photos I've ever taken, there is something about the one on the left that just appeals to me. These are four little girls, they're either in kindergarten or first, I'm not sure, and they're dressed like they're a hundred years old. And if you just look at them, can't you just see that in their faces? One day they'll be there, look at them with their curlers. I just love that picture, so that was at Cherokee for Hundreds Day. Um, so there is a lot of wonderful things occurring in our school. These are just some of the things that I've been able to get out and see in the last couple of weeks. All right, thank you, Sarah. So I wanna talk a little bit about, very briefly, about our retirements this evening. We had three elementary principals who announced their retirement will be leaving us at June 30th, that's Lynn Mayer from Cherokee, Jerry Avansky from Erie, and Ted Zotos from Sequoia. You know, it's, it's written in the media lot and educational circles about mass retirements across our nation, and we really haven't experienced that so much, especially administratively. So these three people represent 25% of our elementary principalships, 25% in one year. I'd like to commend these people for their I'd like to commend these people for their years of service and their dedication to their schools. The best principals in a very positive, democratic, collaborative, cooperative way own their schools. And when you own something, you take pride in it. These three people take pride in their schools. I think of the programs they've implemented, the relationships they've built. Their methodologies for moving their school along a continuum of growth. They should all be commended, each one of them. An elementary principal faces huge challenges. It's a very difficult job. I was the elementary principal. For many years I was alone in the building. When I say alone, you are alone. Because you are the only person in that building that does what you do. I always say, when problems occur, let's call them challenges. When we have challenges in our buildings and when we work with people, we're going to have challenges. It's just, what do you do? I'm a little bit removed from challenges. I mean, people, before they come to me, have gone through certain steps. Elementary principals are there in the face of the building. They are out there. When something happens in a building that someone has a concern over, they're there and they deal with it. Right then and there, and that is challenging. So I commend these people. I commend them for the academic achievements of their schools. I commend them for the sense of community they've built. I wish them great things in retirement. They're all very motivated, intelligent people. And whatever it is they decide to do now, they'll do well. And I think all of them have work left in them. And they'll do well. So congratulations to them. And it's a challenge for us, but we've been in these places before and we'll meet this challenge as we replace them. I also want to recognize Shirley Allen from our HR department for her work in our district. She came to us seven years ago and in that amount of time, she's become a very important person in our HR department. Her work that she does there is very important. And Shirley will be missed. Because regardless of where you work, experience matters. Shirley has established herself as a very effective central office administrator. And her job will be not easy to fill because of the training that's required when you bring people in to understand the task she does. So congratulations to Shirley. And I also want to congratulate Steve Alia, who has been a custodian for a number of years in our school district. He's a fine person. He's a hard worker. He cares about Chippewa Valley schools. He's been assigned to this building in the past and he's been important to this building. I think he's retiring out of Dakota right now. So I want to congratulate Steve also. So we have five people that were, we retired tonight and I'd just like to wish congratulations to all of them. That's the end of my administrative report this evening. Thank you. And there are no curriculum updates this evening.
Very good. I got you. I'll key up and buy.
Yeah, I do want to address one of the comments from the community tonight is about computers. As a parent, I can understand the concern. I just want to make it clear that I, as a board member, I sat on the strategic planning committee seven years ago. That was made up of a cross-section of teachers, parents. There were quite a few parents involved. And other administrators, people from across our district, principals, and board members. And that, this is I guess for Mr. Shipley, you know. As far as the computers go, and I just wanted to clarify one thing. I know that it appears that we added computers because of the pandemic. And even though, yes, we did use funds that we received to produce, but when those strategic planning committees met separately, one of the goals that came out of the strategic planning group, and there were, I forget how many people. There were like a hundred people on the committee. It was a lot. Broke down into groups. And the one group was the technology group and the parents. One of the goals of strategic planning is to make your school district look completely, you know, look different in five years. We didn't quite make the five-year mark, but the committee wanted one-to-one computers seven years ago. So I just wanted to clarify that it appeared, I'm not saying the problem doesn't exist. I just wanted to clarify to you that this wasn't like a decision, oops, we have this money and we're going to buy computers. We purchased them because it had been a goal of the district for many years, but as we passed bonds, we had other things that were more crucial. So I just wanted to address that so that you could be aware of what happened seven years ago and why that was a goal of ours for a long time. We looked at it as an opportunity during the pandemic, but I do understand the concerns. Sorry. Yeah, apologies. I just want to, I'm not trying to cut you off. I just wanted to address.
Yeah, just to clarify, that was what I was planning about is strategic planning. It's just we didn't have the resources to put one-on-one seven years ago. Really didn't have to pay no money to improve because then we take the money, set aside computer replacement, put that back for a five-year replacement model. Bring in some ESSR ones, maybe that money. And then make first purchase and be able to guarantee a five-year sample replacement. So take our program of these ten years out. That's how it's about. It's part of the usage. So I'm, you know, there's true that. I don't know if my parents see that. I think that's what you said. Sure, the parents have said, our local staff have seen this. So I don't think this is the direction that the staff is trying to press upon. Take, I guess, you know, as parents and as staff, we do our best, you know. It'd be better, sure. So I appreciate, appreciate that. Yes, about that subject. As a parent, I would be a little alarmed, just like Mr. Shipley was. Is there a way or have we looked into it or is it possible to look into
entry?
Blocking the internet or something, at least during school hours, or I don't know. I don't know what the, you know, somehow addressing that. Because I, I mean, I have seen where it's that good. But I do know also that they need sometimes the teachers give assignments where it would help if they can go on the internet and research. But if it's getting out of hand, which I can kids are kids. I mean, if there's a way we can look into somehow trying to block that or look into it, I don't know. I don't know if it's possible or not. So.
We do have blocks in the school. There's filters in our schools. I'm not saying that it filtered out what Mr. Shipley was talking about, but we do have filters. They cannot access every, the internet open.
Sir, can you be?
Yeah, yeah.
Sign away as appropriate.
Mr. Shipley and I worked together on a couple of issues. We're trying to work through some things. Blocking the internet on the webcast during the day, I think, would be a lot of our teachers depend on internet access for the activities we're doing. The classroom streaming that we do, school logi, grades. There's everything is so web-based these days that that would really, I think, render the devices pretty ineffective in terms of learning. But there is a degree of management that happens with this and it's something that, you know, we need to continue to work on. When, just like cell phones, cell phones have been a battle in the classroom since I was in the classroom. When it's not an appropriate time to be using it, then, you know, the student shouldn't put it away. And if the students refuse to do that, there's disciplinary action that happens. So there's definitely a degree of management in classrooms by our teachers that happen. And again, there might be, if we have students who are not following those guidelines in the classrooms, that's something that we deal with. If students can't responsibly use their devices and follow those guidelines. And we do have them all sign an acceptable use policy and I would love to take a bunch of devices away from the kids because I do think there could be positive uses to them, but that can be an end step. We have definitely had a few disciplinary incidents along the way in one-to-one and we're continually tweaking our policies and the filtering and everything else that's on them. One of the problems that Mr. Shipley mentioned, Scratch. Scratch is interesting because it's a coding site, but it's very gamified, so it's fun. But it's also something we learn and it's a program that our middle school Lego Robotics classes use. So I couldn't just block Scratch because that would, so there's a lot of balancing happening with our one-to-one and our filter. And again, there's got to be some people management too. I don't think anyone envisioned one-to-one as kids should be on a computer six hours a day. Right. And that's not, as a technology director, that's not my vision at all. So they should be used appropriately at times when the teacher says it's okay. And teachers have, or parents have a full right to say, you can't be on this all night at home either. I would support them with that a hundred percent. So we're working through it and there's definitely some challenges that come with it. I don't know if that helps it up.
Oh, yeah, I just, you know, thought there's a way we can just look into it just to see. I didn't know we're looking into it or not. So it sounds like we are.
I think with any new instructional tool, there's an implementation curve. And that's where we are right now. We now have students in classrooms who have access to a computer. And for teachers, it's how do you use this as a tool in your classroom to, for students to reach instructional goals? And this, this does not necessarily have to be about a computer because this is about anything. And until teachers go through instructing like this, by doing so, they gain experience that allows them to understand how kids are going to react to it. So as they structure future lessons, they get better at it. It doesn't matter. You could give kids something, think of any invention that was way less sophisticated than a computer years ago. And you put it in kids' hands and they're doing things with it you didn't know they were going to do with it. You know, whether, it could be anything. You think of the first Crayola crayons. And kids were given this in the classroom. I bet teachers had to think about, okay, how are kids going to use this? Because it's just new. And kids do all different kinds of things, especially now with the internet where they can go anywhere at any time. So I'm sure this is something that, that teachers talk to each other about. Because they certainly don't want kids doing things in the classroom that don't positively impact their learning. So it's a matter of professional development. It's a matter of experience for teachers. So it's an experience for all of us, for the tech department, for the educational services department. So where are the initial stages in this? So the kind of feedback we got tonight and the kind of feedback that teachers probably get from parents every day and from students every day is all very important. And that will shape how instruction with these computers work over a more extended period of time than right now. So. So we'll get there. It'll get better. And for some, it's probably great right now.
And I am one of those people, but I do realize the teachers have a lot on their plate. In a perfect world, I'd like to wait a while and have teachers just have to teach, but we know that's probably not realistic right now. They have so much to do to the point where they get depressed when they lose their prep tax because it's so needed. But I'm just thinking if there was a way to put her look into it, but it sounds like Sarah already addressed that. So we're looking into it. Like you said, it's new, so we'll need to figure it out. And address it.
Yeah. And listen, great things are going on in our classes. Absolutely great things are going on in classrooms. Teachers are working very hard and they're having success. We're at a different time right now in our country's history and we've had some other challenges thrown on the plate. But regardless of that, if you go into classrooms right now, which I get into classrooms, they're very positive environments. Kids are learning, teachers are teaching. So it's good. These are, these are good challenges that we have right now where we are. So, thank you.
All right, here you go. Actually, my is executive session, AP Student Expulsion hearing.
Yes, Mr. Boytovich. Mr. Aquino. Yes, Mr. Bednar. Mr. Pearl. Mr. Sova. I thought they're going to executive session at seven fifty-two PM.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll be coming back at the open session to adjourn any of our other sessions. All right, we're back in open session at nine eighteen PM. We are in resolution of expulsion of students zero-three, zero-seven, zero-two-two, WYD zero-one. Board of Education, we conduct a hearing on March seventh, two thousand twenty-two, a closed session concerning the administration's recommended expulsion of students. Zero-three, zero-seven, two-zero, two-two, WYD zero-one. The student and student's parents have been advised on the charges against the student running and have been advised of their due process rights. The student was provided with all due process rights required by law and district policy. Board has considered assertive practices in all the evidence presented in the hearing. And based on the evidence, has reached the following conclusion. Student zero-three, zero-seven, two-zero, two-two, WYD zero-one was guilty of section four, point one-seven, obscenity, section four, point two-eight, verbally threatening staff or student persons associated with district and state of Michigan revised school code, section three-eight, oh, one, one-three, one-one-eight, parentheses, two. Therefore, it is resolved that the student zero-three, zero-seven, two-zero, two-two, WYD zero-one is expelled from Chippewa Valley School District from March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, through the end of the school year. The twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Student will be considered for reinstatement for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year via evaluation by a licensed pediatric psychiatrist and successful completion of a seventh grade schoolwork. Student zero-three, zero-seven, two-zero, two-two, WYD zero-one is prohibited. Prohibited from entering any premises owned, operated, or controlled by the district or attending any district function for the duration of the expulsion. How big? You may question by itself. Mr. Bednar is supported by Mr. Sova. Roll call, both of us, by, please.
Mr. Bednar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sova. Mr. Aquino. Yes. Mr. Pearl. Myself, no. Mr. Boytovich.
I would like to see him come back sooner. No.
Motion carries with a four-two vote.
Well, so this, you are, yes, for the rest of the school year can be considered for reinstatement, provided he is evaluated by a licensed psychiatric, pediatric psychologist, psychologist. And also. Yeah, we're gonna have Mr. Silby. And also you need to complete your seventh grade schoolwork. You successfully complete that schoolwork. You're evaluated by a psychiatrist. Show that. Show that you learned your lesson and provided you do that to this kind of hearing for reinstatement. We will allow you to attend eighth grade at WYD. So you had your work cut out. You've been a good student. You don't give us too much for it. You got, it's a wonderful woman here. You know.
Yeah.
But you gotta work on it yourself. You gotta catch yourself. Try to, you start feeling like, you gotta catch yourself and say, yeah, that's not the way. That's not the way I was raised. I should be on the other side of this, trying to tell other students I act. I should be on the other side of this, trying to, I'll tell other students I act, go, give an example, model for them, not to be, um, disruptive like, like you did. So, uh, you know there's consequences, you expect it, uh, you try to be as fair as you could as a board, and, but allow you a chance to get back in our district, as you know, there's hope for it. But like a nice young man, just don't, nobody understands why you acted like that. You didn't understand why. Okay.
Chase, choices, Jay, not fight for you.
Yes, I mean, this is your chance. Now, if your grandma fight for you, then you get six of us sitting up there fighting for you too, okay?
It's not permanent, it's.
Yeah, we didn't want to affect his eighth grade.
So, Mr. Silly, you can get her, uh, set up with, uh, virtual school we talked about, perhaps finish her seventh-grade work. Okay. Psych, psychiatrist, I would be, I see he has one. Uh, pediatric psychiatrist, I don't figure that, okay. So, Mr. Silly, be a work musician, big deal. Um, we, we hope, uh, see you back in our schools this fall, but that's up to you. All right, with that, we'll close this hearing. And the motion to adjourn. So, by Mr. Sobal, supported by Ms. Aquino, all those in favor, six-five, I say aye.
Aye.
Post, reassert at nine twenty-four. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck, yeah. Fight, succeed.